There you go.
We got this call. We're good. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda amendments dated December thirteenth? Motion by class, second by Casey?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, yeah. Any public discussion, I'm sorry. I can't see the guy back there.
Dave, please try to use the flashlight.
Okay. About the claims, has everybody had a chance to review the claims? Motion by class to approve, second by law.
Sure.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Civil defense, how come we can't put our own tracks on? I guess if they hire Doug's, one of Doug's guys, they'd have to pay the engineers off or something like that. Civil defense.
I got two good questions for Chris.
Then why are, if we got them conservation people, why didn't we hire a moment now? I don't quite understand that. Don't they have guys that work there?
Yeah, that's a good question for the conservation board. Yep.
I have a few questions here from the board. But Tammy, she entered lunch the other day because it was like ten bucks a month for, it wasn't twenty bucks, twenty bucks a month for ten months because they're all being paid a hundred and twenty for the calls.
Yeah.
I told you it wasn't per month because that's a little steep. I don't know, maybe that's something the board should maybe do a self-help policy to visit every department different. I mean, it should be the same.
Do you want to make a note, put that on the agenda for next week?
No, I mean, first year, whatever.
Putting on after the first year.
Doug pays us fifteen and these, they get paid twenty and... Should be some consistency at it again.
And do you want to note on the mowing while that's the conservation?
Well, don't they, well, they're all there.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for next year. Maybe have the board come in and meet with us about their asking for conservation department. That would be the time to talk to Kendall about some of the issues.
Well, you guys will have to do it when we get on.
Yeah, but that would be the right time to talk to Kendall. So either we'll make a note of it or one of us will remember.
And then like Tom Ristau and Steve Young, they had some dollar signs behind their names, but no reason. So I asked Tammy, she had to look it up and it was for mileage. Well, they put mileage down, so there's no questions asked.
They should, they should have the miles plus the rate.
It said a hundred fifty-two ten for Tom Ristau, nothing behind it.
We have to put down the miles times the rate and that's what the state demands, so they're going to have to do it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions on the claim? All those in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did they get your demo yet? No. There's two of them.
Yeah, it's on the list.
She gave Beaver out of that.
I heard Dana.
Yeah, I think we're ready for the veterans there.
Okay. November was pretty busy. Once for me, I had fifty-three calls, eighty-three messages, thirty-five walk-ins. We did transport one veteran and we did two military funeral honors that month. Was out of the office for a couple of days. Currently, my records count stands at eleven hundred and eight, so I'm getting a little closer to my target. Currently, I've got thirty-eight VA claims open, seven that are pending development, and nine that are ready for decision. It's slowly trickling in, getting about one or two approvals or completions per week from VA just due to the PAT Act and some of the backlog. Continuing to work on my budget for 2023. Be at your work on the twenty-ninth, even though I'm taking vacation over that timeframe. And need to be on that day. I did submit an executive summary to VetPro on the evaluation of their software program. They thought it was very comprehensive. They were going to pass that along to their CEO on some of the recommendations that I had for the program at the user level, and so I'm waiting to hear back on that as to what they're going to consider implementing or inculcating into this next software upgrade. Continuing to work with Mr. Jim Mori on the estimate for cost to scan gray books four and five. I have books one, two, and three done. They are digitized on the server and preserved should something happen to the hard copy of the gray books. Those are preserved, so more to follow on that. I did update the commissioner's table, meaning when they started, how long they served, and I will provide an info copy to you all on that so that you have visibility with that. And then I emailed out a memorandum for our meetings, the commissioner meetings for 2023. Didn't know if you guys had received that or... We, nothing's really changed. We still plan on meeting the second Thursday of every month at four forty-five with some exceptions due to school conflicts that are noted in the memo, so. Currently working on some train-up for VA Vet Life Insurance. That's going to take effect on January first, so I'm trying to read up on that program because I do have some vets that have been asking about enrollment for that. Continuing to work on the VA PAT Deck claims that are recently taking place. Getting inundated with a lot of conditions that are now recognized and approved by the VA. So the word is out and vets are coming in to take a look at that and ask about those things. And then one of my do-outs to you is the metrics for the end of the calendar year, where I'm at with my office, what are some of the bigger key items that have been accomplished. So I'm working to get that taken care of. And then I'll work on the public service announcement, but I'll be taking vacation from the twenty-second through the second of January, so I won't be open those days. Subject to your questions, that's all I have, gentlemen. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Next thing on your agenda is... Okay, we'll do that. No, wait a minute. We have a decision to approve the liquor license for bottom of the cup, LLC, Brittany?
That one is on hold. I'm working with Doug. When she gets her zoning stuff done properly, then we can move forward with that, that one.
So right now, it's going to be on hold for today?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one is approved liquor license for pit stop pumpkin grill.
That's just a renewal.
That's a renewal?
Yeah.
That's the...
Going over section.
Section. Got moved to approve the pit stop pumpkin grill.
Okay. I'll second your motion, Dan. Are there any discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
And we're calling Cory Tilson from Wellmark. He is the Medicare Specialist. Last week, I briefly briefed you on the options for just a Medicare seminar for staff, but there's the employee group benefit Medicare plan that you would have to approve. So I think it would be best if Cory explains it. I know enough to be dangerous, quite honestly.
Dangerous, good.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to...
I just want Cory.
Yes, Cory, this is the Cassoue County Board Supervisor. So we have Donna Nielsen and Doug Miller here and board members and our auditor.
Ah, terrific. Good morning. How's everyone?
Good.
I think Cory is, Cory, I just had indicated that we had met last week that we are looking at options for possibly a training for staff to give them a seminar with more information and that you would maybe go over what the board would need to do if they wish to pursue a group Medicare plan.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Happy to do that. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, I checked on, I had met with Donna and Doug last week and really we talked about a couple of different things. We talked about essentially a group retiree program, which I can give some detail on. And then we also talked about trying to set up some employee retire, I guess retiree or employee Medicare meeting. That would be more educational, so I'll just kind of briefly cover both. And then certainly if there's any question, let me know, stop me, and we'll hit those. But the employee group retiree program, what we talked about is essentially a way that new county could offer a retiree's benefit to any retirees from the county at essentially no cost, at no cost to the group and pretty limited administrative burden. The real benefit to that program is that you can offer a Medicare supplement, local life plan that mirrors the old plan app that used to be on the individual market and is no longer available. So this would be a way for the county to essentially offer that program, that benefit to retirees of the county without having to contribute anything financially and is really honestly just a value add for employees and also folks who are looking to retire. Some details on that plan, we work directly with the members. It is up for the group, whether or not they want, you want to contribute or not to that. I would tell you, most of the groups that we work with on this together program don't pay anything in terms of premium for the members. And if that is the case, we work directly with the members upon enrollment. So we would essentially get folks enrolled, then we bill them directly for premium and essentially work with them on knowing. There is some list on Donna, or would be some list on Donna and Doug then, just in providing information for that program and packet to employees as they are retiring. But once we actually get folks on the plan, it's basically a hands-off deal for the county. As far as pricing on that goes, that program, because it is a group product instead of an individual product, it is a little bit more expensive than what you see out on the individual market. So without being able to kind of see to the audience and understand if anybody maybe is familiar with Medicare or more familiar, when you look for Medicare supplement policy individually, like if you went to your local Wellmark agent and were looking for Medicare supplement policy at sixty-five, those plans are going to be age-rated. So as you continue to get older, those plans get more expensive. With the medic, with the employee group retiree program that you would offer, those rates are annually adjusted, but they adjust about two or three percent every year. And that becomes, while it is more expensive initially, so if you're age sixty-five, looking to enroll, that is going to be more expensive than what you can buy individually on the market. Once you get to be about seventy, seventy-one, that employee group retiree product actually gets cheaper than what you can buy on your own out in the market. So there's a lot of benefits to that program. Certainly, if there's any question on that, I can answer those before I kind of talk through why we also were talking about some employee meetings, the kind of supplement that employee group retiree program.
That only applies to part C?
No, so the employee group retiree program wouldn't be part C. You would need to be enrolled in part A and B, I'm excusing, in order to take the EGRP, we call that for short, and then you would need a part B plan. So because it's a Medicare supplement type policy, that part A is not included. Part C is going to be med, med advantage. Are there any other questions on kind of what that program looks like? Why would it, or why would that be a good thing for employees to have or retirees to have an option?
I don't see any other questions.
Okay, so internally, there are, as we continue, just let me know. But the reason that we also talked about doing some employee meetings is that along with that EGRP and with kind of the nuance there regarding the rate and kind of how that gets to be a more, you know, cost-effective option as you get a couple of years out of retirement, we also see real value, you know, in working with other counties, other school districts and other groups here at Wellmark, with providing employee educational type of meeting along with offering an EGRP. And the reason for that is really, I would say, like threefold. One, it allows us to get a chance to kind of provide that education on the EGRP product specifically. So rather than putting that on Donna and Doug, we can come out, we can talk about some of the benefits, what that product is, we can also make sure they understand, you know, that they also need to be enrolled in part B and part A and part B. So we handle some of that education for employees that might be considering it. Secondly, we also see often times that when it comes to retirement and folks kind of get close to age sixty-five or over sixty-five, a lot of times we see that in working with groups, that sometimes employees are hesitant to retire just because they maybe don't have all the information or they don't know where to get all the information surrounding Medicare and all the, you know, the alphabet too, all the part A, part B, all of that. So getting out in front of employees and being able to kind of walk through that, explain what those different parts are, explain kind of when you need to enroll, when are you eligible, and kind of try and take some of that mystery off around Medicare way for employees can sometimes help them reach that point where maybe they are ready to look at retirement. So we also see that as a big value. And then certainly, it's just a good way for us to kind of get in front of people who maybe have questions that again, don't know where to go to. So if we were to look at doing some employee meetings, and the reason that we propose that is not at all to, you know, it's not a sales presentation, we're not, we certainly can enroll people if, you know, they're looking to enroll or maybe it's that time, but really, we would be coming out and we'd do that, you know, at no cost to the group to essentially provide some additional education for the employees, give them a person to talk to if they do have questions or maybe aren't sure about parts of Medicare or kind of what they need to do. And then also help support and kind of launch that group retiree product that you could potentially be offering to those employees. And then ideally, kind of what we see with other groups is that we almost do that on an annual basis because every year you may have, or maybe a semi, or a biannual, I guess, every year or two, come back and kind of do that again just because you will have people continuing to kind of hit that point where they're looking at Medicare and considering their options. It's a good way to continue to provide that education to employees that when they are ready to make that decision to retire, they have all the information they need and have somebody that they can ask any questions that they might have to. That's kind of why we recommend supplementing the EGRP with some employee meetings just to provide that additional support and education. Any questions on kind of the conversation that Donna and Doug and I had last week?
Again, the group plan, that would include everybody in Iowa in that group?
Yeah, so that group plan, you can actually offer that to anybody nationwide. You know, as far as the eligibility, that would be, that's up somewhat to the group. As far as who can enroll into it, they do need to be retired and off of the group plan. So it is, it's not a way to kind of move folks off of the county active plan and onto a retiring solution, but if they're actively retiring and going to be dropping off of a group plan, they can take that EGRP once they, once they are retired and off of your group plan.
That, that...
It is available to anybody.
That includes spouses?
Correct, yes, that does include spouses. And specifically to your question, yes, anybody in Iowa can take that, but if you have folks who are retired, are retiring and moving to Florida or Arizona, which sounds pretty darn good this morning as I was running kids into daycare, it's awfully cold down here. But if you've got folks that are doing that, this program has a network to Medicare Supplement Plan, which means that anybody nationwide that accepts Medicare will accept this program. So you can also offer it to folks that are moving out of state, that live out of state, all those things. As long as they've been, you know, as long as they are, have been a Cassoue County employee and kind of meet the eligibility requirement, you know, that you have the set for that, they would be eligible. So on the prescription drug side, Wellmark does have a plan. We don't have a group option that I would necessarily recommend to Cassoue unless... We have group part D options, but they are more expensive and they almost always require the group to contribute to them, to make them a financially viable option for an employee. But we do have individual part D plans, which we can talk to in those educational seminars. But employees can also, you know, obviously, we love if they stay with Wellmark to get that part D, but if they find a better option that fits them better to Cigna or UHD, they can ask part D really to any carrier that they want.
Okay, my last question, does it affect the metrics on our self-funded group plan?
Not directly, no. So again, this is going to be just retiree. So if you have somebody who, if you have somebody who's sixty-six and is retiring, they would be able to take that, they would then drop off of the group plan. So indirectly, it could if folks retired and decided to take the EGRP. But as far as rating impacts to the self-funded plan, it's not going to impact that one way or another unless you actually have folks that choose to retire and move to this plan.
Now, you did say though that there could be some administrative costs to the county?
No, no administrative cost. There is some administrative involvement just from the theme. I would assume that would be Donna and Doug in the sense that we will provide them with packets that include information on this program, include an application, kind of just some highlights and really the thought there is that they would then provide that to employees. So the administrative involvement would strictly on their end be involved or isolated to essentially providing the information to employees when they do choose to retire. But as far as costs, there are no costs to the group, no administrative costs at all to offering this to employees.
Anybody else have any questions?
Doug, is there anything else that you think we should cover that maybe I didn't cover that we talked about last week?
The only thing I can think of, Cory, is that the board would actually need to approve going forward with the group plan in order for a binder to be prepared, and that takes about, did you say forty-five days?
Okay, the approval, sorry, just want to make sure I understand, the approval or the binder process takes forty-five days?
Well, the...
I know our binder process takes forty-five days, I guess I'm just asking if the approval also takes forty-five days?
But the board actually has to act on that. The regular Medicare seminar could just be offered, but if you, we wish to go towards the group plan, the board has to act on that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Anything else, Doug? I have nothing. I would ask for a motion to approve the group Medicare options for Cassoue County employees. I have a motion by Casey, you have a second? I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Well, I know people that have Medicare supplements and they're nowhere near with this cost. And they have, the only difference is that they do pay some deductible. We have a serve program, you can handle it, most people go through. I think we were on a scripted one, weren't you? I don't, I don't necessarily see a lot of benefit to this. You know, have more meetings and I guess I'm not really sold on the whole idea, but yeah. But that's just my opinion.
Could I say something on here? Just so you know, I am a ship counselor for Cassoue County and have been trained through the Iowa Insurance Division as a volunteer. Do not get paid for the work that we do. We work with Medicare-aged people in helping them get Medicare information and sharing the process. We do not enroll anybody in a supplemental plan. Those have to be done by a licensed agent, okay? We do help people with the part D, the drug plan part, we can do that. I would just say from my point of view, when you are sixty-five and you enroll in a part B supplement with, which is what this gen... Part B supplement with, which is what this gentleman was talking about, the, the costs for those plans are going to be fairly low. I don't know what kind of cost they're looking at here. But the costs of a supplement increase each year. And by the time you reach age 70, what maybe started out at $135 a month may now be $200 a month. And that will keep accruing because they're age-related, age-approved. So as you get older, they're going to increase. So when he's talking about the initial cost maybe being a little higher, but by the time you reach age 70, it's maybe going to level out, that could be a good thing for a retiree if that's there. I know at our house, there's discrepancy in age by three years. David's is, I want to say about $40 a month more than mine because of his age. So, you know, it'd be something that you'd want to look at, but, you know, go from there. The drug plan part would be separate from that, as he said. And those, like this year, for 2023, there are 24 different drug plans for eligible people. And you find one that's lowest cost for them. And it may not, may not be Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, but that's okay. But the Plan F that they're talking about is the Cadillac Plan. Medicare pays, F pays, there's no deductible, anything very seldom would you ever get a bill. You know, I wouldn't say never, but it's, you know, if you did get one, it'd probably be pretty low cost, whatever it might be. But-
Yeah. And I would add that the F that we're talking about is also, I probably mentioned this, but I can't remember exactly, the F that I mentioned is no longer available to anybody who is becoming eligible for Medicare after January 1st of 2020. So if you had somebody who retired and turns 65 tomorrow, they will, if they wanted a program F or a Plan F, they would no longer be able to get that on their own individually. That would only be available through something like this Employee Group Retiree Program.
And the other thing is, this would be employee choice. They still could look at, they would not be obligated to go towards the group plan if they could like choose to have a cheaper plan at 65, correct?
Correct. Yep. And that was the other thing I was going to mention, I found, is that, that is why we highly recommend doing some employee sessions as well, just to give them some of those other options. Because I can tell you from my experience in kind of working with its products, as well as our other individual Medicare products, you're probably not going to get the majority of people that want to take the program F just because of that additional cost. You know, we can talk about the value of kind of having that more consistent rate and not kind of being on that age-rated track. But ultimately, we understand that most people may look at that and say that's maybe more than I want to pay, even though, you know, in five or six years, that might be a cheaper option. So that's why we also want to just make sure that employees also have the information on some of those other products, like what is MetAdvantage, what are the other Medicare supplement options, so that for the, you know, that other bucket of people that maybe don't want the Plan F and the cost there, that they know what they've got available to them and they know that they've got some other options.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Casey.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Church.
Yes. All right, thanks, Corey.
Thanks so much. Have a great day. Appreciate your time.
We're going to jump over to items on the agenda and go to discussion, decision.
the pound sign. Join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password followed by the pound sign. There are two participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
Morning, Tim.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you? How are you?
Hello, John, in here, yeah.
Oh, yeah, this is the Kasoot County Board of Supervisors.
Well, Tim, good morning. I have my colleague, Elizabeth Burnett, with me this morning.
Okay.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Sure.
Do you have any questions for us?
I, I guess I wondered how we should use our time this morning. I wonder, do you want me to address any particular questions with the ordinance or with the state process? Or do you have questions about the draft that I sent over? I really want to use our time less effectively by talking about what you want to talk about.
The draft is long, so I don't know, anybody in the audience, have you read it?
I haven't read it yet.
Do you have any interjection on it?
Would it be helpful if I just summarized it?
Right. Why don't you quickly do that?
Okay. Does everyone in the room at least have a copy or have a few that you can look at together?
I can make copies quick.
We'll make some copies and hand you out. By the way, we got them on our iPass, that's the only thing we have right now.
Oh, that works. That works fine. As I'm talking, I just wondered if I, as I'm talking, if you're able to look at what I'm describing, it'd be kind of helpful. The first thing I'd like to mention is, you know, this is a zoning ordinance. So it needs to comply with your comprehensive plan. And so I sent a copy of your comprehensive plan, which is a little bit dated in the sense it's from 1973. And, you know, it could, it could use some updating in terms of population trends and projections. But I also think it's a really good comprehensive plan. It covers a lot of really important topics, plays out in my law ordinance, or it helps with implementation, describes everything really well. And so, you know, if any county that wants to use the zoning powers of the county to direct pipelines, you need to start by rolling up their sleeves and looking at their comprehensive plan. And each county has its own comprehensive plan that'll be a little different. And it should describe your current land use and it should describe your goals for future land. And so, I've reviewed your comprehensive plan and it has all of, all of those features in it. And what I, what I did was really tried to look through that and pull out and find clear statements of your county's goals for land use in the county and incorporate those into the ordinance. So the, the beginning part is what's called the recitals or the, they're kind of like legislative findings. At the Board of Supervisors, you're doing the legislative findings here. And, you know, you're, for anybody that's reading the ordinance, are trying to comply with it. Here on the first page of the draft, we're identifying your legal authority to do this, which includes the Iowa Constitution, Home Rule provisions, which includes Chapter 335, which is the county zoning chapter. And it identifies that you've got a current zoning ordinance in place as well as comprehensive plan in place. And then you have this kind of long barrier act in the middle with numbered, with numbered provisions. Those are actual quotations from the comprehensive plan that they put together back in the 70s. But I think it, these are still good statements about why you've adopted those regulations and what its purposes are. And we want to do that because the draft ordinance that Shelby County kind of started with, but the other counties are looking at, it's a framework. And there are certain things in it that could be changed from county to county, especially based on, you know, the particular land use or the particular land use goals of the county as expressed in the comprehensive plan. So you can, you can see some differences in Kasoot County from other counties and so reflect that, or it can. So we want to identify what those are. And so this is one of the reasons that it's long. But we're just identifying how the counties prioritize the land use so that we can get to the pipeline ordinance later in the ordinance. You, you can see how the pipeline ordinance implements the goals that the county has had since 1973, right? Another thing that the, that the ordinance has is some provisions that require pipeline companies to turn over information to the county related to emergency management, hazard mitigation. So we want to try to find if we can, based on the comprehensive plan, related to that. That's important both for the safety of people in response to, to emergencies that we develop or hazards of various types. We want to identify what kind of uses people are doing in your county of lands and structures that may be dangerous to others. That's certainly both related to zoning and related to your obligations under Iowa Code Section 479B to do emergency planning together with the cities and the counties and with the state agency to coordinate that. So we, we want to identify all of that, describe the obligations you have to do emergency management gives us, then supports the parts of the ordinance that are requesting that information because it will help your emergency management administrators respond to an incident if there is one. The second page kind of has a lot of that in it. We're talking about the police and firefighters and we're talking about emergency management, planning and authority. We are identifying later in the second page, the basic jurisdictional framework that exists for regulating pipeline. One of, one of the tricky parts about the ordinance that you are trying to develop here, is you want to avoid on the one hand, the jurisdiction that the federal government has over safety standards. And you also want to avoid the jurisdiction that the Iowa Utilities Board has over the determination of public convenience and necessity and the granting of them to domain. You know, there are, the pipeline companies will tell you that you can't adopt this ordinance because either the federal government and the safety standard jurisdiction or the state government and its state level permit or both just simply preclude you from adopting an ordinance. That's a question that other states have confronted and the, and the federal courts have upheld, some of the ordinances adopted by cities and counties as applied to hazardous liquid pipelines. But the Iowa courts and the court of the eighth circuit, which is the federal circuit that we're in, haven't directly addressed that question. So as you, as you think about adopting ordinance, I mean, you need to be aware that they're likely to be challenged by the pipeline companies who think that, or who want these ordinances to be preempted because they, they don't want to have to comply with, for example, 99 different sets of regulations in Iowa, which is what, if our zoning ordinances are upheld, you know, they would potentially have different setbacks, for example, in each county if they want to construct the project. And so there's lots of reasons for them to fight as hard as they can to overturn the terms of zone. So we have to be careful then in developing it to identify what the federal jurisdiction is under the Pipeline Safety Act and what the state, what the state isn't preempting from doing. There are two things in the Federal Pipeline Act that Congress said that are important with regard to setbacks. Congress said that a pipeline has its materials, safety organization or agency, which everyone simply refers to as CINSA in this context, which is a part of Department of Transportation. They set administrative regulations for the design, the construction, the operation and the maintenance of the pipeline itself. How big the diameters can be, how often they have to be a regulator or pumping station, how thick the walls of the pipe are, how constructed and how they're operated after it's constructed. So your zoning ordinance really has to avoid doing that or it will be preempted by federal law. But the second thing Congress said is that the Department of Transportation has no authority to determine deciding when the routing of a pipeline, which means the federal government doesn't get to tell you where in your county it should go or where in your state it should go, at least. That's the job of the state government. And in Iowa, the state government has adopted both, section 479B, which is administrator, or the Iowa Utilities Board administrator, and has a process for at the state level. And it's adopted with the zoning powers that counties have. And so together, the state and the local government should be able to determine where the pipelines go in relation to existing uses, existing property owners. And the federal government can't interfere with that process, is what Congress has said. And so we're identifying that, you know, in the middle of the second page here. We talked more about jurisdiction in the first one there. On the third page, we've identified the state laws that apply. So Iowa Code Section 479B.4 requires the pipeline companies to file petitions. And so we're, we're identifying other applicable laws so that if someone's challenged, everyone knows that they're not exempt not to, you know, interfere with either the state or the federal process. So we're just identifying what those other applicable laws are. Then further down on the third page, we get into the specific climate pipelines and navigator projects, both of which are going through Kasoot County. So this is what you might just call a statement of the fact, you know, what's going on in the background as you're adopting it. And at the moment, they have not begun construction in the county part of it because they cannot begin construction until they complete their process with the Iowa Utilities Board. Both companies have applied and have been petitioned at this point. But they have not been held hearing or better perceived as a schedule. And there's much to be done in the Utilities Board in terms of people arguing about whether they should be granted the permit. And on your behalf, I have interviewed both the summit and navigator proceedings so that you can make arguments to the board about what your zoning ordinances are. And we can ask the board to have the company respect those zoning ordinances and apply the permit. And that is secondary component of how your county can kind of address the issues of pipelines. If, if the Iowa Utilities Board is compliant with it, there's arguments you made that that's not preempted at your level or they're not federal preempted level, type of. So it's important to make those arguments to the Utilities Board. We've got a provision here related to- We've got a provision here related to public health physician statement. I think one of the questions I have, whether your county board of health has not had a physician statement, especially one related to state with existing uses and from occupied structures. Other county boards of health have done that. And I don't know if I have documentation on whether your county has done. I don't have an answer to that question. I don't think we have.
Like I said, on the board of health.
Okay. So there around here, top of Page four, that's something that the board of health would need to do or we would need to take it out of the document here. Or if they were about to defend a statement, we would change that. Just something to tie. As you move forward with the zoning ordinance, it will be important for the county, for your zoning administrator, for your zoning commission, that they all have a role in administering both the zoning ordinance and moving forward with this particular ordinance. You want to be talking to the community, to the cities in the county, to economic developers, housing developers, to the schools and the hospitals, make them aware of the pipeline and its impact, make them aware of the ordinance you're trying to adopt and get their feedback on the setback, get their, especially with the cities. You're trying to do them a favor by protecting the two mile area or so, I mean, maybe in here it's two and a half, but area outside of the city for them to grow and to, the ordinance has provisions to protect that as well as grow. And so the cities in your county should be aware of what you're doing and then you can talk to them about acting resolutions in support of it as you move forward in the process. One of the things that the ordinance does, here as we move on to the fifth page, is it identifies the date for a public hearing and assigning a zoning commission that was basically to be built in. But as a zoning ordinance, there is a very particular process that the Iowa Code lays out that has to be followed for every zoning ordinance that involves the planning of the zoning commission, you know, taking a look at the proposed ordinance, holding a public hearing on it, collecting public feedback, writing a report, sending all of that back to the board of supervisors before final adoption. That makes it a little bit different than a regular ordinance, which the supervisors can simply adopt. Zoning ordinance has many more steps to follow through than include a public hearing, both the planning, the mission and the public hearing of the supervisors. And it'll be important, if you intend to adopt this ordinance, to make sure that you get all those parts checked correctly so that your ordinance can't be attacked, you know, through some football from the adoption process. That, what I call the recital, which describes the legal authority of the general federal and state regulatory framework, talk about the situation with the pipeline companies, identify the relevant provisions of the comprehensive plan, generally lay the framework for anyone trying to read, understand, comply with the order. So let me pause there for a minute and see if you have any questions about, about any of that, I'm sure. But, you know, our time is limited, so I, but I do want to have opportunity for you to ask questions before I move on to the here in the ordinance.
Tim, you said that you had a sample letter to send to public health. Could you send that to me, email that to me?
Yes, this can.
Yes, it is, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Iowa, Iowa send you, there's probably documents that I'll send you with, some others. I have a couple examples that I'll send you on.
Okay, thank you.
Give us a quick outline on our procedures that we'll have to do. We have to have three readings, correct? Of the ordinance?
The zoning commission, the zoning commission doesn't, you know, what I would do is, and I can write all this down right after the fact too, but I'll go through it now in case I have questions. But I would, and maybe you have this already on your agenda, but I would, at a meeting with the supervisors, have an action item to refer a proposed ordinance to planning the zoning commission with their consideration.
We have that on the agenda today.
Yep, great. So that's kind of the first step. And then this document goes to them. This really is a draft document, right? It can and maybe even should change based on the process of that any zoning ordinance would go through. So it would go to the commission, they would need to hold at least one public hearing on it. And other counties have held multiple meetings of the zoning commission, what they call working sessions, where the public can attend. And, you know, the zoning commission, when they get it, you know, may want to go through it, you know, provision by provision and understand it. You know, I have gone to some counties and attended this zoning commission meeting and helped set people through the requirements. And it's as much for the public as it is for the zoning commission, but it's an important part of the process to understand the ordinance that you're, that you're considering, to get people's feedback on it. So whether or not there's any working sessions or additional meetings, it's kind of up to the zoning commission and its chair. But they do have, you need to hold one public hearing. That has to meet the public hearing requirements for county meetings, so it has to be published in the newspaper and all that. Let me, you may meet a second time, approve at a public meeting, take a vote in the action item approving their report with their recommendations. And if the ordinance here includes setbacks of, let's say, 1,000 feet from an occupied structure, but the zoning commission hears testimony at the public hearing from members of the community and there's, they feel that there's a basis to change that setback to 1,200 feet, that may be a recommendation that the zoning commission make. They would include that in your report. And then, you know, after the public hearing process and the approval of the report drafting, it comes back to you and then you would have the final decision on whether to make or change additional setback requirements, for example. And the same would be true of any other provision in the ordinance from the fees that apply to the pipeline companies, which the ordinance includes, or to the requirement that landowners obtain the permit before signing the easement agreements with the pipeline companies. That's also a requirement of the draft ordinance. You know, the ordinance includes many features and components, it's a framework, most of which are not, you know, required of the county. So, but there are particular goals and objectives, which is the various components of the ordinance have. Does that address the process enough? Or we'll get back to you. You can have three readings or you can waive them under, under the ordinance law, depending on how quickly you want to adopt it. You know, the county held three public hearings and not just three readings. I heard that they are, not a zoning ordinance, but an ordinance, and I think they waived the second, third ones. So that's really the prerogative of the supervisors, you know, according to, you know, county ordinance statute law, like you follow and add it, up to you.
Can we have a reading before we send it to the zoning commission, though?
Yeah, it's supposed to go through the zoning commission. That part is required. It's required that they make a report. It's required that they hold a public hearing. It's required that the supervisors hold one public hearing. So, you know, I, whether you want to waive the second, third readings or hold three public hearings, it's not difficult to hold a public hearing, you just need to notice it properly. You know, I would, I would say you could hold one public hearing and then just consider the reading at three, at three public meetings without holding, you know, three wholly noticed public hearings on it. And that might be, might be the process you want to follow, but it's certainly not, there's nothing wrong with giving more process and holding more public hearings and more public notice. And in this context, that could be fairly important, given both the high profile nature of the pipeline project, but also the need for all of these individual landowners to comply with the conditional use requirement in the ordinance. You know, what you're, what you're doing in the ordinance, if you would adopt it in the framework proposed, is you're checking that those individual easement requirements and the line locations that are going across the landowner's property as they're negotiating with the pipeline company, who's going to make sure that the line location on that property complies with your setback? Well, that's, that's a role that you should take. And so the ordinance just asks the landowner to come in and get a conditional use permit and verify the line location of the property with regards to the setback that you set. And so for people to comply, they have to know about the ordinance's option manager requirement. That's a lot like if they had to get a building permit. And so if you can think of it that way, they've got, someone's trying to build a project on the property and they need to get a county approval for this, like they would another time, mainly the project, right? But there's also a permit requirement on the pipeline company, of course. And so you're trying to address the issue of proximity to the pipeline in two ways. You know, one is put obligations on the pipeline companies, and another is put obligations on the landowners in your county to negotiate and get the line location in place for everyone. So if I move forward down the ordinance, I want to take just a moment to explain how this is mounted. You already have a zoning ordinance and you are amending that zoning ordinance by enacting another ordinance. And this ordinance has a section, has a section one, section two, section three, section four, that's a, the amendment, the zoning amendment to this ordinance with the ordinance that amends your current one. You have to amend an ordinance with an ordinance, you can't amend an ordinance with a resolution or you shouldn't. So I need to be careful, we recite whether referring to your existing ordinance or whether referring to the proposed ordinance, to make changes, the overall. So section one, section two, and section three make some changes to your current zoning regulation. Make some amendments to them to accommodate what is, what is down here, Article 25, specifically dedicated to housing, liquid pipelines. So this would become Article 25 of your zoning ordinance and then some of your other articles in the current zoning ordinance would need to be renumbered. Okay? So I'm on page six now, where Article 25 begins. And that's really where the ordinance is proper relating the location of the hazardous liquid pipelines to be in, lays out purposes, 25, 20, 25, 21, the number of definitions, the definitions are important, they can reference to other, other laws so that you have proper coverage and overlap between the state and federal law applied to the pipeline. After the definition, 25.2, there's a requirement to use pipelines as a conditional use slot, create a facility, you use land in the county for a pipeline, you have to meet the conditional use slot requirement. Which means at 25.3, you have to obtain a permit, pipeline companies obtain a permit of the property. 25.4 requires everyone trying to use land for a pipeline to comply with separation requirements. Have any good separation requirements, the distances that you adopted at one hearing this summer, those could be changed, but I have, the current draft of your ordinance includes the separation distances that you already identified, the two and a half miles to the, one and a half miles from church, school, nursing home. And so, you know, these separation distances are quite aggressive, if you will, and, you know, the totality of them likely would result in a pipeline not being able to come through the county. It would create a hardship if the pipeline companies do not challenge the ordinance in court, you know, they might still need a variance from the Board of Adjustment from separation requirements. And you would have to think at that point about, in total, in their totality, whether the distances are reasonable or whether you're going to grant variance or exceptions to the distances that you set out. Those are the determinations made in the permitting process by the Board of Adjustment. And under Iowa law, those determinations would have to be made by the Board of Adjustment and not by the supervisors. Does that, does anyone have questions about that? Those are important points to be made here.
No, no questions.
Okay. So 25.5, the permit application requirements for the company, what they have to submit, fairly long list of things. 25.6 is the requirement for property owners, shorter list. 25.7, the fee, there are amounts in here, but if you'd like to change some, you can. There's an application fee that the pipeline company pays for each respective person in the county. There's a $50 application fee for property owners to make conditional use permanent. Notably, there's $116.92 per mile of pipelines in all of the county that the various pipeline companies come to the county with, would have to pay once constructed in annual assessment. And other pipeline companies have offered, in many cases, pay for emergency management training and equipment. That could certainly be a condition that your Board of Adjustment places on the permit. That might also affect the management in addition to them, and quote unquote. There's a public hearing requirement at 25.8 for the pipeline companies. That quarter, when it is old landowners, they simply would need to have the permit approved by the Board of Adjustment at one of the fees rather than through a public hearing There are specific reservations of the right to do that varies with Board of Adjustment At 25.10, there's some applicability that's important to note. The ordinance doesn't try to reach back and affect the terms of any easements that are already signed, but it would apply moving forward. It also doesn't attempt to impose these requirements on any true public utility, that is, someone serving customers in the county. Typically, a hazardous liquid pipeline probably doesn't serve any customers directly anyway, but it's terrible to say that they're serving customers in the county, but it's not imposing the requirements on them. It does require these existing pipelines to comply with reclamation, abandonment, decommissioning. At some point, a pipeline, you know, its use will cease, it'll be decommissioned. And if it's a hazardous liquid pipeline, there are, there are some requirements in this ordinance to take care of, apply in the ground, work with landowners to do that. But it provides substantial flexibility to the landowners, and they're not required to let the, they're not required to have the pipeline company trying to dig it up, but if they want that, then the pipeline company must agree to do that. So the ordinance later on does provide some options for landowners with regards to the inclusion of pipelines. 25.11 is a fairly long section. It addresses the requirements provided management information to your county that you can properly plan or or spark, but you cannot. What you cannot do is activate the company's response. But you can require them to coordinate with your emergency management team. We believe you can require them to turn over this information so that your E M Ps, the city, and shared personnel, whatever you have, employees in your county, that they can be, that they can properly be prepared for it. If there is one, they need information to do that. That's what 25.11 addresses. 25.12 addresses the abandonment, which I dismissed in a moment ago. Maybe all the way down to the end. Section seven, eight, nine, and 10. Section seven is saying there's what we call repealer or any ordinance. So everything complex is revealed to the extent it's in conflict. There's the separability clause. Any one provision would be stricken out. Anything else in the ordinance would span that was always part of the ordinance. And an effective date that includes points for either the passage or the paper of the three readings. And that is the draft ordinance. I have about five minutes left before I have to hop off onto the call. So I can use those five minutes however you want.
I got one question. The planning and zoning doesn't want to take the responsibility of some of the requirements conveying, pass it back to the supervisor?
Does the commissioner report adjustment?
Either one.
It depends on what it is, but in many cases, they're not. They're statutory obligations. The granting of conditional use permits, special exceptions, variances, is done by the board of adjustment. And the supervisors cannot adopt one of the ordinance. On the last, the zoning commission considers the ordinance and makes a report with recommendations. You don't have to follow their recommendations, the supervisors, but you can't adopt one until you've got a report from them.
Okay.
So the requirements like that are all looked out in Iowa code. And I have encountered with different counties that made a different level of compliance with those provisions. And so some counties have had to go back and fix their current zoning ordinance to adjust to those requirements. I didn't see anything like that in your ordinance, as I said before. Even though your comprehensive plan and ordinance was designed in 2073, it was really well drafted at the time, you are largely compliant as far as I can attest.
Doug, you got any questions?
No, not at this time.
I sit on the board of health. And what parts of this do we need to, do I need to take to the board of health for adoption?
Well, he would be taking to the board of health, which copies the ordinance. Invite him to attend the both public hearings. Invite him to review the setback distances and the emergency management provisions. And gee, if they have comments, they don't need to take formal action necessarily, approve the ordinance. I mean, they don't have the authority to set up the ordinance in case. But, you know, just like with the board of health, the board of health certainly is an important institution in the community. And their thoughts on the ordinance should matter to you and to others. So, you know, it's important because I'm to make a statement, to, you know, draft a letter or adopt a resolution of the board that either gives a thumbs up or makes recommendations on your setback distances. And you don't have to follow those, of course, they're not binding. But, you know, if you adopt setback as a recommendation of public health officials, then you have a rational basis for the setback that you've adopted.
So I should just take this entire document to the, we have a meeting tomorrow morning. So I should take a copy of this to the meeting and let the board review it and make any comments on it.
If Tim gets me that letter, I can get that letter.
Send it to Lindsay. So she has it then. She can give it to you.
Okay. Anything else in the board of?
Go ahead.
If there's a voluntary easement already signed for the pipeline prior to this being adopted, are they upheld to follow this ordinance or they grandfathered?
He wants to know if somebody's already signed an order on easement. How does this ordinance affect that?
The individual landowners, if they've already signed the easement, don't, it wouldn't invalidate their easement. But, so it's, now that's the grandfathering issue exactly. It's, it's to make sure that as a county, you're not trying to use your zoning powers to invalidate contracts that have already been entered into, basically.
So the setback to an applied.
Pipeline companies, in order to get the zoning ordinance, would need to comply with the setback requirements. So it, it, before they began construction, they need to move the line. They'll have to go back and renegotiate those voluntary easements. But the requirement for the individual landowner to obtain the conditional use permit only applies to easements attempted to be entered into act of the effective date of the ordinance, if that makes sense.
So they would have to follow the setbacks or no?
They'd have to follow the setback, correct?
If they were signed before the ordinance, no. But the pipeline company will. The pipeline company will still have to comply with it. So they'll have to renegotiate with the.
Any other quick questions?
It sounds like his main concern is with the separation requirements. Would, would he have some specific recommendations on what would need to be changed in the separation requirements to make the whole ordinance a little more palatable? Or he says that these requirements are pretty aggressive, sounding like maybe there'd be a little better chance of enforcement of this ordinance if some of those distances were not quite as aggressive.
He's concerned about how aggressive the setbacks are in the ordinance and if it would be better if they weren't quite so aggressive so that it would pass. What's your opinion?
I, I think that we do need to be careful about the totality of the setback. If, you know, if the goal of the county is to try to stop the pipelines up together, I guess that's one goal. If the, if the goal is to work to try to set setbacks that could be complied with in the event that the pipeline companies get their state permits, then you may want to consider a little bit, a little bit of flexibility, at least, on the separation requirements. But, you know, I, there, that could cause problems in the board of adjustment process. If there would be, for example, denial of a permit. But we're still a number of steps away from that. And, you know, my, my guess is no matter what the setbacks are that you choose, the history of the summit at any rate has been to any county that has any ordinance at all related to this. So we may never wind up with an application at the board of adjustment before we wind up in federal court.
Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Can I need to hop off at this time?
Oh.
I'd love to keep working with your staff. It's been really great work with so far as this technology is working.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, bye.
Bye.
Nancy, you have something quick?
I was just wondering if we had a waiver option of workaround for summit? If an occupied residence would sign a waiver allowing the pipeline to go within a half mile of their house, that that would be okay? No, you can't have a waiver?
In the ordinance that we have in front of us, we don't have any waivers.
Right, but I was wondering if it would be easier to defend if we had a waiver in it.
Well, we let people that don't care get paid well and say, okay, I don't care because within a quarter of my house, those people should have the right to go ahead and say, but it's true.
So they're already got their money.
Well, but then you guys are coming back in the backside saying you can't put it through there even if you've already paid the money.
Well, they can't take the money from you.
So is there a thing in here that allows each individual person to say yea or nay?
No.
And the other thing, why are we even here if this is a pipeline for profit and it's not legal to have it? That utility board is supposed to turn it down anyway. Or at least not let them use eminent domain that they want to use.
At the present time, I think we should probably send this to the zoning commission. And I think if you want to make amendments to it, it could be done at that time. The way I understood it, is that how you understood it, Doug? That they, zoning commission would recommend.
The zoning commission would end up having public, a, at least one public hearing, if not more. And they would then send a recommendation back to the board of supervisors. And the board of supervisors can, will have a public hearing as well with that ordinance and put it in its final, final.
Draft form.
Form and act on it.
But at some point, we have to hit it to the zoning commission. We're running out of time.
Yeah.
So today I would entertain a motion to send this to the Sioux County Zoning Commission. I have a motion by Casey, who has a second. Second by Flack, any more discussion? Do a roll call, please.
When the notification for public hearing for the planning and zoning commission is not greater than 30 and not more than 15 in a paper, 15 days. I had some vacation planned for the middle of January. So what were you guys thinking for getting this back to the board of supervisors?
You can't be a hippie with.
15 days today.
Well, it would have to be next week. Your publications are Bay of Crossway City and Algonquin.
So you got 15 days for publication.
From that publication, yes.
Is that going to be in your case?
My vacation is planned for January 18, 19, and 20. So it's right in that time period. So, you know, I guess I, I don't know what, again, what you guys, your timetable is. I think you probably want to get that back as turned around as quickly as possible.
Well, you're not going to, yeah, but you're, we're into the 23rd of January, then, that week.
And then my, I don't know what this is going to take, but we're going to have to also have Tim on the phone or in person at these public hearings. Which is going to cost, is that going to be something the board of supervisors is going to pay for? Planning and zoning pays for?
I, you would think that we go back to the board of supervisors.
Very good.
We'll make it work as quick as you can, Doug.
I will, yes. Just so you know that I do have some time. But I'm going to have to visit with the, we're, we're down to three people on that board as well.
Correct. My next question, do you?
I got to make sure that they're all going to be able to attend, so, because they're going to have to have, all three of them will have to vote on that, three out of five to get that.
Who's on the plan in the zoning?
The chair is Brian Tool, Dave Rock from the northern part of the county, and Mark Studer from the southern part of the county are the members. The board should be appointing people to that board as well, yes.
I was asking who was on it, I didn't want to be on.
And the other thing, just as a reminder, when some of, in our initial discussions with wind generation and conditional permits, the board of adjustment, who would be making decisions on variances, conditional use permits, special use permits, we did have people resigning from that board because they did not want to. That's a volunteer type thing and they did not want to be put in a, in a position of criticism. Would that be an accurate situation?
We'll have to deal with that when it comes, Doug.
Correct. Well.
We are, we were aware of that.
Some of the emotional situations that happened.
Doug, if you need me to do anything, is that also that process? Just let me know.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Where does that more typically meet, Doug? In like when the evening stays?
Evenings, and usually just here in the courthouse. But I've been also been doing, been having all of them virtually also via Zoom, so.
But for this particular situation, will it be public?
Oh, it'll be public and virtual, both.
Do you volunteer? He's smiling, that's all you need to do is go to the point.
I think he shook his head, yes.
Any other questions? If not, please do a roll call.
Casey.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes.
Planning and zoning commission and board of adjustment.
With that, before we go back to the agenda, we're going to take a 15 minute break. Thank you.
Yes, same for you.